Please take your seats. And welcome everyone for the April meeting, our board meeting. This time I'm turning it over to Vice Chair Sue Lee.
Would you bow with me please? Almighty God, as we stand in awe of your goodness and mercy today, we invite you to be present amongst us. We place ourselves before you in all the decisions that will be made here tonight. May the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable to you, O Lord, our strength and redeemer. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lee. At this time, I think we have a walk on on the consent agendas. Any question on that?
We do, we have two, two changes. Item C of action items, Newton Grove Rescue Building, that item is not going to be ready for tonight. So we will bring that forward at your May 6 meeting.
Right.
And then the second item is the grave relocation resolution for the consent agenda from the Joe Warren Industrial Park.
Okay, all right. Some move we approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
I make a question.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Agenda's approved. All right, this time we'll call on Mr. Charlekin.
Good evening. I've come here all today to give you an update of what's going on in the water department. There's been a lot of work going on in the past two or three years. And I just want to give you update. As y'all know, we're an enterprise. We receive no tax dollars to operate. What money revenue we receive out of water sales is what we have to operate off of. As far as putting in new water lines, new infrastructure, tanks, wells, we have to depend on loans, grants, and special appropriation money, which is lobbied for. And I commend you commissioners who have lobbied and got us a lot of money in the last two or three years for these projects. And I thank you for it. First of all, under special appropriations, we have obtained 17.3 million from state legislatures that y'all have lobbied for to fund Clement Area Phase 1 and 2 infrastructure improvement, fourth water lines to go in the Roseborough area, and two new wells. We've also obtained through lobbying $1 million from Congress in Washington to fund upgrades to our treatment plant. Under grants, we have received $17 million in SCIF and ARPA grants, which was grants that was given out shortly after COVID. And we were fortunate enough to get $17 million of that money. We have received $17.3 million from Department of Water Infrastructure for the Ivanhoe project to install water line in the Ivanhoe area. The grand total of grants and special appropriation we have received in the last couple of years is 48.6 million dollars. Construction projects, construction projects that are completed. We've completed projects in the Clement Area Phase 1, Hollering Road, King Road, Roseborough Bypass. All of these pipes are up and functioning and selling water, except Hollering Road. We're waiting on state approval on that. That's a total of 16 miles of water line. Current construction projects underway, South McCullen Road, Governor Moore Road, Auctioneer Road, Serenity Lake Road, Journey Can Luke Road, Kenan Weeks Road, East Darden Road, North Peavine Road. Also, two new 125,000 gallon tanks, one in the Roseborough area and one at the Spivey's Corner area, and two booster pump stations that'll be at each one of them tanks. That's a total of eight miles of water line. Ivanhoe area project. Status on that is we are still in the process of getting permits and easements. The Ivanhoe project is a humongous project. Forty-one miles of line's got to be put in there. So that's a long process, but hopefully shortly we will begin, start work on that. New projects, this is money that we've just received in the last couple of months through special appropriation that we have not started no construction, but we have started designing stage, that will be getting water lines in the Roseborough-Snow Hill area, Marion Amos Road, White Woods Road, Bubba Gump Road, Lakewood School Road, and V Avenue. That's a total of 16 miles of water line. Clement Area Phase 2, again, that's new. We've just received the money on that. The roads that'll get water line is the rest of Ernest Williams Road, Mini Hall Road, Mount Cornwall Church Road, Dunn Road, Libby Road, Altreville Road, Holland Road, Welcome School Road. That's 13 miles of water line. To summarize what we've done in the last few years and what we're going to do in the future, our total funding up to this point was 48.6 million, which I already touched on, which will touch 25 roads that we'll be able to put water lines on or have put water lines on. Total of 94 miles and a potential of 1,069 customers. Just to give you a little insight on the water department, we have 14 employees. We have somewhere around 700 miles of water line to upkeep, three wells, one treatment plant, six tanks, six booster pump stations. And in the last two years, we've added on 546 new customers. As of February, we have 6,834 water customers. And in the last 12 months, we have sold right at 600 million gallons of water. Any questions? Comments?
You don't want to have a question?
Yes. I know we heard all those roads. And I know there's a question in the audience. When would Old Warsaw Road be added? That's a question.
Right, right.
You want to answer.
I'm glad you mentioned that because he and I have talked about that earlier. And I've also been to the General Assembly on this for some time. These are the ones that we have money for. There are a lot of others that we have put out there to the General Assembly that we'd like to have. But go ahead and you can explain the front.
Help us, Mr. Trump. Okay, and I'm glad you brought that up. We are going to communicate lobby, would y'all's help, to get money for the Old Warsaw Road area. And there's a couple more areas that we're going to concentrate on now to try to get special appropriation money to add water lines to these roads. But Old Warsaw Road is the next one in line that we're going to attempt to get water lines on. I will, for one note that I did not mention on, we have put in twice for grants on Ole Minns Highway. Both times, we've been unsuccessful in getting grants. We'll keep trying as long as the grants are out there to get water for that area too. But as of right now, we've been unsuccessful. But to answer your question, we will be working with legislators to try to get money for Old Warsaw Road and a couple more roads.
Thank you, Mr. Charlekin. Any other questions?
That is certainly refreshing for all of us to hear and to know that we are working, trying to. And I know I've been talking to you a lot about Old Warsaw Road and a lot of other roads that is waiting for the water. They have been waiting and wondering when they were going to get it. But now they've heard it straight from you, what's going on? And that's something that they need to know. What's going on with my road? Am I going to get it or is it in line to get water or what? So I'm certainly glad that you brought that out to our attention tonight so that we will be knowing what to tell people when they ask us.
Right, right. And we'll continue looking for grants and special appropriation money. I will need y'all's help as you have done in the past when it comes to lobbying for special appropriation money. I will greatly appreciate all the help you can give me. And you've been great so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charlekin. Mr. Colsey, I think a number that we had at one time that we had lobbied for was like $168 million.
That was 160 of total projects.
Total projects. So we're lobbying all the time for that. This is 48 million, I think is what the number was, 48.6 million. So we continue to push for that.
Mr. Chairman, Alfred, you come in.
Sure.
I think when I came here in 2010, I think we had a little less than 5,000 customers. So the system is growing. Having worked for USDA for 30 years and retiring, a significant portion of my time was built on water development. And I had water systems that I worked with for over 30 years that once we got it started, the more lines we got into ground and the more successful the water systems were, the more they were able to come back and add on. And it's sort of like creating tentacles. The more you get out there, then you will have other opportunities to expand. Now, if you're somebody that doesn't have work, sure, sure you're going to be disappointed. But everything that you do is a step moving forward that probably will enhance our capability to be able to add more lines as time goes on. At the same point in time that we say that, it's still important that we operate the system efficiently and make sure what we're adding is cost efficient that the customers can afford.
Exactly. Any other thoughts? Okay. We'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Charlekin. This time we'll open a public hearing for naming a private road.
We've duly advertised a public hearing to receive comments on the names of certain private roads. The Road Naming Committee recommends that 903 EML 937 be named Q Whiffle Road.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the roads be renamed.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Now we'll go to item three. The public defender's office space, Mr. Black.
Yes. The public defender's offices for the state actually created a public defender office for the county within the budget. The chief public defender, I guess, has been hired and they are seeking office space in Sampson County. And according to the general statutes, if this is part of the court system, the county is required to provide that space. We have been, we looked around for space large enough to accommodate what they anticipate the staff will be. Right now, we anticipate that staff building up to as many as seven people and maybe more later on. The only space that we did find that could house the office almost, well, really can house the office immediately is 202 Sampson Street. The public defender has looked at that space and said it is large enough and will work for what they want and is within walking distance of the courthouse. We recommend that the board approved this space at a cost of $3,900 per month with a five-year lease term.
So that's the county's expense. We're not reimbursed anything from the state. Is that correct?
That's what the county has to pay to have that, have those offices.
But they'll pay the staff, their staff.
That's their staff, yes. That's just their staff, county staff.
So five individuals?
At least five and probably going up to seven before it's over with.
And I will say that, to my knowledge, once the state has created a public defender's office in North Carolina, there's not been one that's created that has then folded. This is filling a very critical need in this community. We have cases that are taking a long time to play out. And the reason for it is we don't have enough attorneys in Sampson County. And you've got, you know, court-appointed attorneys from, you know, Wayne County, Cumberland County, even Lenore County that are having to come here and cover multiple counties. So I do think this is going to be a benefit to our court system.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Need a motion to approve the leases. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve. Motion to second. All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. It's approved. All right. Mr. Starling and Mr. Black, I think you're up again on the property.
We have received, there's been a discussion about this topic a number of times here before the board. The board reconsidered whether to offer a part of the property through the negotiated offer and upset bid process. They decided to proceed with that. So the county staff solicited for offers. We have received one offer to date for $25,000 for the purchase of the property. Now, we have already recorded the survey that will subdivide the property. So the portion being purchased is 1.992 acres. And that is subject to a about 2.6 acre easement over the property. If you look in your agenda materials, the survey map is included and you can see that parking easement. The county is retaining the Veterans Memorial portion of the property, which is about 0.275 acres. The board does not have to accept this offer. You can vote to reject this offer, at which point we'll continue to see if we receive offers. I mean, I don't have a crystal ball. I would be surprised if this offer does not get upset during the upset bid process that we're required to have. We'll run a notice. There would be a 10-day period after that notice when others can submit upset offers. And that continues on as long as we continue to receive qualifying upset bid offers. Or the board could choose to reject this offer tonight if you feel that this is not adequate for that property.
Okay. Any question?
Do we have a tax value for that?
We do. I would encourage you to, you know, I would not get too tethered to that at this point. I think, again, I don't have a crystal ball, that this process could start, you know, allowing the market conditions to set, to set that number. Or as I said, the board could reject this offer if you feel like it's not a qualifying offer.
So we could reject it even if there is not an upset bid?
You could still ultimately, at the end, they would have to come back and you could reject the offer then as well. That's correct.
So we could vote to go with this offer. But if we didn't get anything else going forward, we could actually go back and reject it.
You still have to confirm the offer at the end of the process.
That's good.
Okay.
That's the way I read it, thank you.
So do I have a motion to authorize the sale through the upset?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Now, once we, once this starts, then we got to do this first before we can have upset bids, is it not correct?
Correct.
This has to happen first.
You do this, then you start the upset bid process.
Then we go from there.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we receive it.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye or raise your right hand. All right, that's approved unanimously. All right. Then Newton Grove, that's taken off. So we'll go now to the board appointments. Vice Chair Lee.
Thank you. The Convention and Visitors Bureau has requested that we remove the current commissioner position from the Board of Directors. And I make that motion now. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Also on this one, they have that, the Convention Visitors Board would like to have the permanent position be changed from the Director of Sampson County Expo Center to the Director of Sampson County Economic Development title. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay, moving on to the Economic Development Advisory Board. I move that we extend the three-year term for Gary McHaring Jr., Bill Scott, and Bartley Warren. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And also with the Economic Development Advisory Board, I move that Gary McHaring be appointed to serve as chair for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And lastly, the Southeastern Economic Development Commission has requested that Ray Jordan be appointed to serve on the executive board. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right, that takes care of that. Now we're down to the consent agenda. Any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. You got a second, all in favor, raise your hand. It's approved unanimously. Okay. All right. Board information, we got. Mr. Colsey, you have it?
I've got several things.
Okay.
And I will be brief. Number one, one of the things that the staff is working on that we're extremely excited about is the new webpage that you authorized us and gave us funding for last year to develop. We believe this is going to have a lot of benefits to all of the Camp Sampson County residents and people that will have access to information about the county. In that regard, the staff would like to invite the commissioners to come in on your next meeting date, which is May the 6th. Come in at 4:30 to meet over in the administration building for a 45-minute presentation on the new webpage. And I think it's going to be interactive and they're going to show you some of the things that we will be able to do under that. If we finish at 5:15, then we plan on providing you with a light dinner so you don't have to leave and come back for the 6 o'clock meeting. If you decide that that is okay, then what we will do at the end of the meeting is we will just recess to reconvene on the May 6th at 4:30. That is one thing. The second thing is I've had several conversations with Brad Hardison over at Extension. And if you recall, other than a couple of years around COVID, they were generally doing an annual presentation and meal for the commissioners to talk about the problems in Sampson County. Because we start at 6 o'clock, the having a dinner meal before 6 and meeting and then getting over here is kind of challenging. They would like for us to arrange and let them do a lunch meal for you at their building. And we presume we would allocate from 11 o'clock on the day you choose until 2, with the idea that we will probably be finished before 2 o'clock. If the board would consider, and Brad and I talked this afternoon, and do it on Wednesday, May 29th. And the reason we're doing it late in the month is the two previous weeks, depending on what the Board of VNR does, you may have five or six meetings during that period of time that will kind of conflict. If May 29th is not a date, then we can come back and you can decide what you want to do. But I think it would be helpful to them if we could set a tentative date and then we will work out the arrangements for the meeting at later time.
Okay. Last on May 29th will work for me. I don't know, but.
Okay.
You're good? Okay. We'll take that date and then.
11 to 2.
Yeah, 11 to 2.
I will tell you in advance that you're going to have a lot of, you're going to be busy during the month of May. Not that you're not busy all year, but buckle up. You're getting ready for it. Because in addition to the Board of VNR and everything else you're doing, you will be having budget deliberations once we get that prepared and ready to present to you.
Okay. All right.
That's all.
That's it? Okay, I think now we're down to the public comment section. Questions? All right. Ms. Rouse?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Andrea Rouse and I live in Roseborough, North Carolina, in the Snow Hill community. I'm sure you're all familiar with Snow Hill and you're probably sure you know what I'm going to talk about. I'm going to talk about the largest landfill in the state of North Carolina and the second-largest methane emitting landfill in the United States of America. A typical landfill has a life expectancy of 50 years. We celebrated that anniversary of 50 years in the Snow Hill community in December of 2023. We've come to find out that this extension on the landfill in Snow Hill has been given 20 more years. So the Snow Hill community must suffer 20 more years with this landfill. This tells me something. This is how I feel. And it's just a feeling for me that we are not cared for in the Snow Hill community. We have people who are dying. And I don't mean just randomly dying, but they're dying all the time. My family, people with issues with their kidneys, people with cancer. We just had a lady die in our community. And I was talking to some people from the state about what we were going through. And I pointed to her house. I see a lady right here, she just died. She was on dialysis. I say, you see the house behind her? That's where her daughter and her son-in-law live. They just both died, both on dialysis. Right behind them was my cousin. She just died in October. Guess what she was on? She was on dialysis. That's the majority of people in Snow Hill. And we really feel like that we're not getting any care. We don't get anybody to come and talk to us to find out what's going on. But we know we're going through this. We know we're going through this with this landfill. So what we're asking for is some attention in Snow Hill. It's time to have the personal effect. We understand that you have to do stuff here on the board and you have to make votes and vote on the budget and rezoning and all that stuff. But what about the people? The people that put you where you are? We have District 4, we have our commissioner, Ms. Lee, here. But the responsibility of our community is not just on District 4, it's on all of you. Because we are a dying community. This is real, this is not a joke. I'm not just up here to talk so people can look at me. My people are dying. And we need help in Snow Hill. And not just the sicknesses, but the buzzards. Have you heard about the vultures? They're tearing off our roofs. They're eating up our pets. Our children cannot go in the yard alone because of the buzzards. They're so aggressive. The landfill has purchased eight, eight effigies. What these are are dead buzzards. They look like dead buzzards. And you can put them up in your yard and they're supposed to scare off the buzzers. Eight effigies for a whole community from a billion-dollar corporation. We can do better than this. That's all I got to say. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rouse. All right, this time we call on Apostle Ma.
Good evening. I'm back. Okay. First and foremost, I'd just like to say that there's been a change that we see that this people have spoke. There's a lot of people here this evening. So I'd just like to submit to those of you who are here. Some are going, others are staying. But just as Ms. Ross, I like to piggyback on what she said, called it ties in very eloquently with what I'm about to say. I said it last month, it bears repeating. I said it last month, it bears repeating. This Board has lost connection with the community. It seems to be you do not care about your constituents. It seems to be that there is a sense of, there's a clique within the community. People cannot get on Boards. I've seen again this evening that there was appointees that I've been, I put in for it October of last year. I have yet to get a call. Also, anytime, and I'm speaking from personal experience, anytime when one comes against the authority of this Board, that there are retaliations. But when you do not care and you are not scared, you stand and you continue to stand. So I'd just like to say that whoever, well, I know who the new Board members would be, but just remember this, as Ms. Ross said, and I like to reemphasize it. Remember who put you here. The people have spoke last month, and I think there's a couple more positions coming up in the future. Remember who put you here. I spoke with two of you prior to the elections a few months ago. And you shared with me that it was only two of you, so you could not do anything. So now you have some help. There's some cancers that lies within this Board. There are some cancers that lies within the governmental systems of this county that needs to be eradicated, preferably going forward. Oh, I'm standing here. I ain't scared. Trust me, I'm not scared. But going forward, that you identify those cancers, that you eradicate those cancers, get rid of those cancers. And being that I have already faced this Board in the community, that was a battle. And as I said a month ago, when the question was asked to me, exactly what is spiritual warfare? You may have won the battle, but not the war. So you will see me again very soon, and the war will be won. Trust me when I say this. It will be won. So going forward, I'm not going anywhere. You all going to tend to see me. I want a Board position. I want a Board position. I would say it every month until I get appointed to a Board position. So I'm a constituent, a taxpayer. I live in this county. I want a Board position. And I'm not talking about some pacified position. Put me on one that has some type of authority where I can make some change. Thank you. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ma.
My name is Wyman Vander Honeycutt. I live in Spivey's Corner. I campaigned for Allen. He's a good friend of mine. I voted for him, and I'd vote for him again. Just want to get that out of the way. I understand we're going to a four-year assessment. I would feel more comfortable if the county could stay on the eight-year. And I know that the problem is that the property values sway so much during that eight-year period that it's hard to recapture your revenue. But I also understand a lot of other counties do a one-year advancement. They stay on the eight-year assessment, and they do a one-year advancement, and they go in and get the property values up to where they need to be, but they stay on the eight-year assessment. When you go to a four-year assessment, I don't have a lot of experience in county government, so I'm just, I'm speaking off the hip here. I feel like it's more expensive, it's more burdensome on the tax office. We don't need debt. It's more work on the county Commissioners. And I know for a fact, other counties are paying sometimes over $500,000 to $800,000 to do these appraisals with these outside appraisal companies. But that's a lot of money, guys. Next, on these appraisals, the north end, first the south end of the county. Everybody knows in Sampson County on the north end, we got Sandy Ridge, we got some marquee developments up there. People come from all over up north when they get these big retirements. They flee from up north. They come down with a $4,000, $5,000 retirement, and they live like a rock star in Sampson County. They love it. I've talked to them. Your houses on the north end of the county are 55 minutes from Raleigh. Now, who in here thinks that a house 55 minutes from Raleigh is going to be the same as a house around Harrell's, the backside of Roseboro near the other county, or Garland? There's a big difference there, guys, and that's part of the reason that everybody's upset about these appraisals. We've got people that went over 100%, 130% difference. And I know we ain't been assessed in a long time. I know that. I won't look in for a 5% appreciation. I knew mine was going to be big, but mine come in way over 100%. And another thing we got to remember is we've, in Sampson County, we've got older houses. My house is built in 1890. My great-grandfather was the County Commissioner, Ernest Faggot. His name is on that courthouse. My house is old, it's drafty. I've got old window weights in there. You know, it's not sealed up. It's not a country club house. It's not a $300,000, $400,000 house. If I sold my house, I'd be lucky, get maybe $150,000, $160,000 or something like that. We come in way higher than that. I'm not going to fuss and complain about it, but something needs to be, there needs to be more feedback between the Commissioners and the appraisal company. I think you need to have a voluntary position, maybe, a liaison between the two so they can feed them back information. Because I don't think the appraisal company did it on purpose. I just think they didn't know. They do a lot of appraisals. They do appraisals all over the place. Ours isn't the only county they do. All right, next. Is that my time? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt.
Good evening. My name is Elaine F. Hunt. I reside at 7171 Old Warsaw Road, Turkey. I would like to ask those who stand in support of what I'm asking to please stand with me regarding the expansion of the water, county water. And before I get started on that quickly, I want to say I sympathize with the people who live near the landfill. And you know, when you all got these positions, you knew what was going to be required of you. Please try to figure out something to help them. I mean, it's just terrible to listen to her talk about what was going on around the landfill. And Pastor Commissioner Garland, I appreciate you asking my question. It's like you read my mind, because surely I was going to mention that after he talked about Clement and Roseboro and every other place except Old Warsaw Road. So I'm thankful that I realize now you all are listening. Because for two years, I would begin to wonder, he who has ears, let them hear. I would begin to wonder about you all. But I'm thankful at least you all are listening, and I appreciate that. I've heard what you said. Now we're going to watch what you do. And we want you to do something. Talk to me is cheap. Ice and tears it all. You can get grants. I heard the man say you got grants for the other places. Find grants for Old Warsaw Road. And I will be back. I'm just like a bad cold. So I will keep coming back because we need water. I'm paying thousands of dollars for filters. Had to get a five-gallon tank or something today. Money out of my pocket when I think you all could do something. And once again, I say thank you. Now show us something.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Ms. Cox?
Everybody has already spoken, Mr. Honeycutt, Ms. Ross, I already spoke on the things that I was going to speak on.
You're welcome to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. All right, Ms. Lane, Sharon Lane?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to talk about, the young man talked about the taxes, but I want to talk about the tax real quick with the Snow Hill community. Basically, I'm like him. I have an older house. When I got my assessment, mine's went up to $93,610. My problem with that is, is I know you can't be everywhere, but in the Snow Hill community, we do have problems with buzzers. When I went to talk to the young man at the tax office, I bought pictures. I started bringing them tonight, let you see. Where the buzzers be on the top of your roof? When you're asleep, it sounds like somebody trying to break in your house. They nest in the trees in the back of my yard. I had a little overflow one time. I called the state. They couldn't do nothing. I had to call a man to tear down some trees, which fixed the problem. But when the water stood up, it was like they were having a party at a pool. I had an animal, a dog. I heard my dog whimpering. When I went out, the whole, the gate was covered by buzzers. I was scared. I ran in. I got my car. I blew the horn. They looked at me like, what are you doing? Because I'm not moving. Me and my friend, Renita Buss, were standing in my yard talking, and the buzzers flew down, came right toward us, and we had to duck. My little grandsons, I don't let them go in my backyard. And the reason I told the young man this was, tell me how my house going to sell when whoever come see this decor, this buzzer hanging in a tree. It's got to be there. And they come and they go, all I'm asking is consideration for those of us that live around the landfill. He told, the man told me, he said, it will not sell for that, but it will sell. That's all I'm saying. I know it won't sell for what they get. I appreciate it making it look real good, like it's of that value, but I can't sell it for that. So all I'm asking is a little consideration for the Snow Hill community and the buzzers that we have to deal with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
All right, that's it for the public comment section. Time I'll take a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?